Johnny.
Hey, I'd like to go ahead and call our meeting to order. Thank you for joining us this evening. This is Monday, September 23rd, in a meeting of the Cedar Rapids Community School District Board of Education. We will actually have two meetings tonight. This is our annual meeting, and it will be followed by our organizational meeting and regular meeting. So, I will go ahead and start the meeting with the approval of the agenda, but before I say that, I want to acknowledge that we do have John Lavery and Ann Rosenthal on the phone with us this evening. They are out of town, but are joining us via the phone. So can someone please read the approval of the agenda? Keith?
I move that agenda Monday, September 23, 2013, Board of Education Annual Meeting be approved as set forth. Niche item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call action. Director Lavery?
Aye.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
Director Witt?
Aye.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
President Meisterling?
Aye.
John and Ann, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, great. Next, minutes were circulated in our board packet, and I ask at this time if there are any corrections, additions, or deletions that anyone would like to submit. Seeing none, it's recommended that we do approve those minutes from the regular meeting held on September 9th. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Same sign. Okay. Next, I'm going to turn this over to Steve Graham to talk about our 2013 financial highlights.
Thank you, President Meisterling, members of the board, superintendent. I have a handout and as well as a PowerPoint presentation for the fiscal '13 financial highlights. This is an annual event. We do this each year following our close of business and our upload of our data, financial data, to the Department of Education, which was the 15th of September. Because of the weekend, it was actually the 17th of September. So at any rate, this is sort of the background as to the information. It is unaudited, so some of these numbers are subject to change, but these are the highlights that we have to date for fiscal '13. Okay, total revenues for the entire district, this is looking at all the funds, is $241 million. Nearly $242 million. The line share of the revenues are in the general fund, by far the largest fund in the school district, and you can see all the different funds that we have: the silo, the debt service, management fund, et cetera, et cetera. All these funds have very specific purposes, and the funds going in are spent in very specific ways according to the Iowa code. The same look on the expense side of the ledger is $260.8 million total. A large part of that is due to our silo expenditures outpacing our silo revenues because of the bond indebtedness and the pace of expenditures that we're seeing in that fund. Just go to Jefferson High School, take a look around, or Washington High School. You'll see significant investments in our district infrastructure paid for through the silo fund. Our total general fund revenues now, we're looking within the general fund to see the pie slices as they are. The majority of our dollars coming in are from state appropriation, state aid, $95.4 million, and the local sources is largely local property tax, at $72.2 million. So we receive federal, we have other financing sources, which would be transfers within the general fund from other funds in the school district. Our expenditures, this is a look at our expenditures by what's called object code, at $186.2 million, and you can see the line share is in salaries and benefits. If you take those two together, you've got 82%, which is right on par with schools across the state. Eighty, eighty-two percent for wages and benefits in the district's general fund. The, this is the cash reserve levy, reminding the board that we did pass a significant increase in our cash reserve levy for fiscal '14. This improves our general fund reserves. This is also the reason why our tax levy bumped up a bit from $15.16 to $15.48, but it provides for an improvement in the district's cash position of the general fund. This is a snapshot now at the trends of our unspent balance and fund balance by comparison. The unspent balance are the gold bars, the fund balance are the green bars. You can see the recent trend to, in terms of reductions in fiscal '14. When we look at fiscal '14, there we go, fiscal '14, you'll see an improvement in the fund balance position, up from 3.5 to nearly $8 million. That is what's predicted, and that again has been based upon the assistance from this increase in cash reserve levy. The unspent balance position has declined again, once again, for fiscal '14 with what we believe is a continued trend in fiscal '14. However, the adjustments that we made with our budget for fiscal '14 will be repeated once again as we move forward to improve that position and provide for long-term sustainability. This is simply the same kind of picture, a measure with what we call the financial solvency ratio, and you'll see it mimics the previous slide that we showed you. Come on. There we go. Showing the fiscal '14 bump up and improvement because of the additional cash reserve levy that was approved for fiscal '14. These are just all of the other funds, the reserve trends of the other funds. You'll see, by and large, there's no big news here. The Activity Fund ending balances are very stable to growing slightly. The Daycare Fund, which combines both the Rockwell and the Five Seasons Daycare Funds into one, strong reserves. Our Debt Service Fund reserves are required for us to pay our long-term debt obligations, and they are exactly where they need to be at this point in time. Our Flood Recovery Fund, that was a negative reflective, the gap of time between spending money for flood recovery and the receipt of FEMA and state reimbursements. So you can see, we brought that into positive territory. Still work to do, still have some FEMA dollars yet to be received. Our Management Fund, because of a bit of a surprise in early outs back in fiscal '11, we spent more than we brought in, and we have corrected that again, you can see. Our PEPAL Fund is strong, and we're going to need those reserves at this point. We'll be relying on those reserves going forward. And Food Nutrition Fund is a strong, growing balance over time. The Capital Projects Fund, which would be our silo fund, is pretty much right on par with forecast, and we know that we'll be seeing a reduction of these ending balances in fiscal '14 going forward. We're very careful watching this every year because our debt obligations are based upon what we spend our silo resources for in our infrastructure plan. And then finally, the debt obligations that we have. In fiscal '12, we reached $121.3 million in total debt obligation. It's been reduced slightly to $118.8 million because of the payment down of principal and interest on our debt obligation, and that $118.8 million figure is compared to the big bold number at the bottom of this slide, $410.7 million. That is the legal debt limitation that we have based upon the size of our tax base. So you can see, we're well within the confines of our debt obligation ceiling. So that's it. That's all I've got. Those are just some quick highlights. There's a lot of data beside this, but I thought you would like to know. Questions?
Thank you, Steve. Are there any questions or comments? Keith?
I have a question. Earlier this spring, you know, when sequestration was being talked about, we'd requested that we maybe not be held to the same standards that are ruled by the federal government. Were any of those relaxed that you know of, and if not, what impact is that going to have in our future budgets?
Well, we're still looking for more information on sequestration. I have one definitive sequestration reduction. That's in our QSCB financing. There's a federal revenue coming in for interest reduction, which has been cut by four and a half to five percent. I don't know whether we have any more information on Title I, whether that has any specific reductions due to sequestration, but we're keeping an eye on it, and anything it has in terms of impact on our federal grant programs will need to be mindful of.
Okay. Others? Gary?
Steve, the Management Fund, is that a separate levy on the property?
Yes, the Management Fund pays for our early separation program. It also pays for our property casualty work comp liability insurance program, and it also pays for unemployment benefits. Those three pieces are legally allowed within the Management Fund.
So did we bump up that percentage then last year in order to see the improvement from a negative to a positive?
Yes, we significantly increased the local property tax levy in fiscal '13 in need to rebuild the reserves that we saw decline quickly in fiscal '11.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much, Steve.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the information. Ann or John, did you have any questions that you wanted to ask Steve?
I'm good at this point.
Thank you.
I don't have any either. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we're going to move to the acceptance of abstract of election, and this is declaring that the following candidates be elected for a term of four years each. Director District Two is Nancy Humbles, Director District Three is Keith Westercamp, Director at Large is Gary Anhalt. And before we move on that, I just want to thank everyone for running for reelection. We all know what kind of personal time we put in and the commitment that we make, so I, as a resident and fellow board member, very much appreciate you doing so, so thank you very much. So, would someone please read the motion?
It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the acceptance of the abstract of election certified by Lynn County Board of Supervisors for the regular school election held September 10, 2013. What?
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
It's okay. You're good. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. This is a roll call action. Director Anhalt?
Aye.
Director Witt?
Aye.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Rosenthal?
Aye.
Director Lavery?
Aye.
President Meisterling?
Aye. Thank you. There being no further business before this board at this meeting, I'd like to stand adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Organizational Board of Education meeting for the Cedar Rapids Community School District, September 23rd, 2013. At this time, I would like to have the directors elect Nancy Humbles, Keith Westercamp, Gary Anhalt come forward for the oath of office and their certificates of election. Do you, Nancy Humbles, Keith Westercamp, and Gary Anhalt solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Director of the Cedar Rapids Community School District in the County of Lynn, State of Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law. If so, please respond by saying, "I will."
I will.
Our next item of business this evening is to elect the Presiding Officer for the Board of Education, and at this time, I would like to open up nominations for the position of the President of the Board of Directors.
I nominate Mary Meisterling.
Does it require a second? Are there any other nominations? If not, I would declare that the nominations are officially closed, and at this time, I will ask you to vote by ballot. Please note that prior to this meeting, ballots have been sent to both Ann Rosenthal and John Lavery. They will be voting electronically, just as, in the same fashion that our board members are that are here this evening. They will be texting me their official ballots, and they will be sending me their official formal ballots to be a part of the permanent record.
You know, I did. I did, and it failed, Laurel, so let me try it again.
This worked in practice, just so everybody knows. There's one.
You didn't get it yet?
Yeah, I just got yours, Ann. Thank you.
Okay, super.
You got Ann, and you didn't get mine?
I just got Ann's, yes.
Okay. How about, how about I text you, Laurel, the name?
Sure, that'd be great. Thank you.
I did. Did you get it?
No. Perhaps you could just say to us verbally as I'm reading. I'll look to see if I get it in. So voting for president is as follows: Mary Meisterling, Mary Meisterling, Gary Anhalt, Mary Meisterling, Nancy Humbles, Mary Meisterling, Keith Westercamp, Mary Meisterling, Alan Witt, Mary Meisterling, Ann Rosenthal, Mary Meisterling. John, would you please tell us what your vote was?
Mary Meisterling.
Let the record note that John Lavery for Mary Meisterling. Congratulations, President Meisterling. You've been elected to preside as the Board President. If you would come forward for your oath of office.
You, Mary Meisterling, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of President of the Board of Directors of the Cedar Rapids Community School District in the County of Lynn, State of Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law. If so, please respond by saying, "I will."
I will. Thank you.
Thank you all very, very much. It's an honor and a privilege for me to serve not only as the President of the Board, but certainly to serve with all of you. I appreciate your vote of confidence. I look forward to a terrific year, and again, just very much appreciate this. Okay, next, I'm going to go ahead and ask for ballots for Vice President at this time, or nominations, I'm sorry. So nominations for Vice President.
Mary, this is John. I would like to nominate Alan Witt.
Thank you, John. Any other nominations at this time? Seeing and hearing none, I'll go ahead and close that, and we will vote by ballot. John and Ann, have you sent your ballots?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm having the same issue I did before, so I'll just tell you.
Director Rosenthal? Okay. Let the record show that Ann Rosenthal for Alan Witt, Director Lavery?
Alan Witt.
John Lavery for Alan Witt, Mary Meisterling, Alan Witt, Nancy Humbles, Alan Witt, Gary Anhalt, Alan Witt, Keith Westercamp, Alan Witt, Alan Witt, Alan Witt. Congratulations, Director Witt. You have been voted as Vice President of the Board of Directors. If you would please come forward for your oath of office.
You, Alan Witt, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President of the Board of Directors of the Cedar Rapids Community School District in the County of Lynn, State of Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law. If so, please respond by saying, "I will."
Congratulations, Alan.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to go ahead and leave the meeting. Do you want to go and run the rest of this for me?
I would. I would like that very much. You have a sick day Wednesday.
Okay. Yes?
Mary?
Yes?
Hi, this is Ann. We're, I think John and I are going to be leaving. Congratulations to you and Alan, and thank you for serving.
Thank you, Ann.
Yes, congratulations, both of you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate your calling in. The record will note then that Directors Lavery and Humbles, or excuse me, Directors Lavery and Rosenthal will be departing the meeting at 5:23 PM. Thank you. Okay, thank you, everyone, for your patience. This is a process that we have to go through every year, and just something that we have to do formally, so thank you. Next, we do serve, our board members do serve on committees throughout the community to make sure that we have good communication and presence in our community, and so I would like to go ahead and make those appointments to various boards at this time. So, Lynn County Conference Board, Keith, are you still willing to serve on that board?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Legislative Liaison, I intend to ask Ann Rosenthal, and I will do that the next time I see her. Audit Committee, Gary, Ann Halt, would you like to continue?
Certainly.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Diversity Committee, Nancy?
Yes.
Okay. And then I intend to ask John Lavery to serve on our Technology Advisory Committee, which is a new one that we've started this year. Okay. Moving on, to go ahead and start this meeting, I'd like someone to please read the motion to approve our agenda.
I move that agenda Monday, September 23, 2013, Board of Education Organizational and Regular Board Meeting Work Session be approved as set forth, and the item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
This is a roll call action. Was there a second?
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Anhalt?
Aye.
Director Witt?
Aye.
President Meisterling?
Aye.
Next is a public hearing for the 2014-2015 school calendar and waiver request for an innovative school year continuation for the '14 and '15 school year. I ask at this time if anyone would like to address the board during this public hearing. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. So Lawrence Winklowski, 4234 Morrell Road in northeast Cedar Rapids. I sent yous all a copy, and I distributed an alternative proposed calendar. The purpose of this is not to be offensive to people, but it's to come up with a compromise. You know, technology continues to change, and I understand the need for professional development day for our staff, you know, but that's the same problem that every profession's having, you know, and the students that we continue to ask more and more of them in the learning process, but we keep taking a little bit more away from them every year of teacher time. And that this year, there was an additional day, one more day than last year. And that, you know, I was told statistics say that this benefits teachers, you know, these professional development days, but I haven't heard word how it benefits students having less time with teachers. I keep hearing that it's a traditional rich community, but I think the two important traditions that should be kept, one is the, when we have graduation, and the other is the quality of education. After that, I think we should get rid of all the traditions, because those are the two most important things that we should have going on in this district. I hear other districts have early outs every week. Well, we're not other districts, and that if we're going to do the same thing other districts do, let's combine all the districts and save a lot of money. And that, you know, the couple things that are real critical about the calendar is not just how many days we have off for these early outs, but when they're taken. And the days that we always get nailed with is the week, like the week right after Thanksgiving, the week right before Christmas, and then the week right after Christmas break. Those Wednesdays are so critical to people who are working, and that you want to build up a momentum in the workplace, and you can't. And that when you go on vacation, you try to get all your work done, and the week you come back, you try to catch up for everything that you missed last week. Well, you're killing them. This calendar kills the momentum of those weeks, and that's got to change. The proposed changes I have, you know, basically eliminates two of the proposed days, and that which is really early outs. And that, but you know, another thing that is that I, you know, it changes this Easter. Did a little research. Only 54.6% of the people in Cedar Rapids are religious. Of them, about, you know, 98% are Christian, but you know, we're a diverse, changing community. You know, the idea that we keep having early outs on Easter has to stop, and that we are a public institution, and that we're not a religious institution. And that it's sort of, I have to believe it's offensive to other people of other faiths. And that, also, the whole thing with spring break. You, I was told at one point, oh, we always have it the third week because that's a tradition. Now we moved it to the fourth break, the fourth week of March. Hey, we are in trimesters. The logical place to put spring break is after the second trimester, and that, like every other institution does. And that, this idea of end of trimester, going back for two weeks, and then having your spring break, it makes no sense. The suggestions I made are logical, I believe. They came up with, I got them from talking to different people, and also comments that were made on Engage CR earlier this year. And that, none of those ideas were put into the proposed calendar. And that, you know, why do we have this site if, for people to put ideas out there if they're going to be ignored? You know, we can save the $26,000 or whatever it is a year and put it to better use. And that, you know, what I'm looking for is really a compromise, and that this calendar that I proposed still has 17 early outs throughout the year, and I think, you know, that should be as good, and it also tries to eliminate having two early outs back to back, or, and that. We try to do, try to make it so it's every other week, something logical. logical. And that, and that's all I'm asking for is, and I think that's all the community wants, is a logical calendar that helps them. One other thing is, we say we're here to help at-risk children. We still don't have affordable daycare for Wednesdays, which at one point I was told that we were gonna try to get. People can't afford five seasons. And the other thing is...
Ms. Up, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else at this time would like to address the board regarding this public hearing? And please again state your name and address for the record.
Okay. Cassie Metvolsky, 1912 Fourth Avenue, Southeast. I guess it's kind of to piggyback off of what Lawrence has said. I do have experience with a different school year calendar. We were at Polk, obviously, and we got familiar with the modified year-round, which was great for our kids. Teachers there really, really liked it. And I'm not proposing the entire district goes to that, obviously, and not enough data was collected on the benefits of that. I do however believe that there were a lot. But, like what Larry said, I feel like we need to make better use of our 180 days. The first three weeks of school, there wasn't a full week. We didn't, our first week started on a Tuesday, which was a half-day. The following week, we didn't have school on a Monday for a holiday, and then the week after that was a Wednesday half-day. And then, the first full week, we had, a lot of the teachers were out of the classrooms doing assessments on their students. And so, I have a second grader, and he has not had one full week of class with his teacher in the room all day, and that is really concerning to me. I do think that we have a ton of really great teachers in the district, and I don't think that we're using them as much as we should be. I was told that most of the curriculum is taught by the teacher in the classroom, which is how it should be, obviously. So, when we have subs, those kids are not learning new curriculum. They're not, they're not doing, they're not moving forward, they're not learning new things, they're simply reviewing or doing some independent work. And I feel like there's enough to be said about that, but I feel like if we're not meeting our test scores, and we have kids that aren't reading at grade level, not performing at math where they're supposed to be, we need to keep our teachers in our classrooms as much as possible. And then to talk about the affordable daycare issue, my kids go to the Boys and Girls Club, which is now housed in the Polk Elementary Building. And there's a lot of good to be said about that, but there's a lot of really inconvenient things about that as well. We were off for an entire month this summer. There was no Boys and Girls Club. They were off two weeks before they started their summer program, so for a week. And I don't remember which day we got out, but for the rest of that week, and then the following next week, we did not have Boys and Girls Club. So, as a single working parent, I was forced to find alternative childcare for my kids, which is just, it's not feasible. And then we ended, the first week in August was our last week of childcare at Boys and Girls Club. So, for three weeks at the end of the summer, I was forced to find childcare again. So, I know that I'm not the only one in this boat, and I know that I'm not the only one that really wants my kids to do well, and I'm not the only one that's struggling with some of these things. So, I guess if we're only gonna have 180 days, and we're going to have the days off that you guys have in your school year calendar, I really think that we need to look at other ways to get the teachers the training that they need to teach the new curriculum, because that's who should be teaching our kids. I mean, if they've been to school and they, they take their job very seriously, I know that we've had some really great teachers, but they're just not in the classroom enough, and they're just not in the classroom for full weeks long enough to make the real, we don't, like Keith said, we're not getting the momentum that we need to keep these kids learning and wanting to be there and motivated to keep...
Excuse me, Ms. Metvolsky, your time is up, thank you.
So, that's all.
Thank you for your comments. Gary?
Just a question, I don't expect a response at this time, but I'm wondering what the cost is to provide, to pay staff per day, additional day? In other words, if we were to add an additional contract day to staff, instead of early releases, paying staff for another day, adding another day? So, what, what the cost would be to do that?
Steve Graham has an answer for you on that?
Approximately $400,000.
Per day? Thank you.
Well, let's have that of record, if we could, please.
It's approximately $400,000. We could give you more specifics there, but that's a rough number.
Okay. Other comments by the board?
Close the public hearing.
I'm sorry, we're gonna go ahead and close that public hearing at this time. And it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's recommendation of the proposed 2014-2015 School Calendar, and authorize the administration to submit a request for approval from the Department of Education for a continuation in an innovative school year for the 2014-2015 School Year. This is a voice vote. All those...
I could comment.
Oh, yes, comments, yep. Alan?
Thank you, President. I just wanted to go on record here that I know we've done these calendars in the past, and I know Mick Starcevic is trying to get ahold of Dr. Benson on this very issue, and it doesn't have to be dealt with now, but aligning the calendars up better with the new regional center is something that, they're looking for some leadership from this district to help them, because we start on different times, and our spring breaks are different. And that's something that, going forward, we need to look at, because it would affect how the students will operate, and how effective that center will be for those students that are attending there right now.
And that would not be a new concept. We have tried to work collaboratively with the other area school districts for years. Us being the first ones, obviously, to go first, because we have the November 1 deadline with an innovative school calendar. Our calendars are shared with the other school districts. But you have College Community School District, who pretty much lines up with the University of Iowa, because they have kids that are coming from Johnson County. And Lynn Mar, I'm not sure, they usually go the second full week of March, and that's our tradition for them. Ours is not the third or the fourth, it's the last full week of March typically when we have our spring break. It's certainly something we can look at. I think Kirk would also probably aligns with University of Iowa. It deals with when they're on semesters, which makes it more difficult for us to try and collaborate that concept, but it certainly is some conversation that we've had in the past and continue to have that with them.
I think they're looking for some leadership from the school district, is what I'm hearing, and, and no one else is gonna go in that direction unless we do, so...
I'll bring the topic up at Metro Supes.
Metro Superintendent's meeting?
Metro Superintendent's meeting.
Okay. Keith?
Ms. Metvolsky's, I have heard that one before about the first couple of weeks of school, the early outs, that, that may be somewhat disruptive. In future years, I'd like to look at that, to see, you know, if we should consider those time periods that, that we don't have as many breaks, and those for a few weeks.
The first two weeks are going to have, are gonna, you're gonna have that, because if you start on a Tuesday, the first day of school is always a half-day. It's generally followed by the week following, which would be Labor Day, so you have the normal holiday in there anyway. The third week, however, we could look at.
Yeah, I'm just asking that we do look at that? Because we just, we do, you know, it just seems a little bit...
It isn't. Right.
Other comments? Gary?
Along the daycare line, too, I know the Boys and Girls Club offers some opportunities for that under early release, but they're not at every school. So, I'm wondering what, if we have anything in place at, at some of the other schools to try to accommodate.
Most of our schools do have an after-school program, either through Five Seasons Daycare. We have Waypoint, and we also have a Four Oaks program that's running. We only have a couple schools that have nothing, but one of the things that have opened up, I know, for Waypoint is they offer after-school options at other sites. We also have a lot of community programs that are transporting kids back and forth from our schools, or they have vehicles and that kinda thing to get the kids back and forth, either on those early dismissal or after-school.
Do the Five Seasons allow for, or provide for just infrequent use, you know, for every other Wednesday?
A drop-in basis that, yeah. Kim is here. And yes, we do, there is an option, it is a fee-based option that's offered to families. We obviously need to know ahead of time, but that is something that if a family just wants, I think they call it occasional care, or drop-in care, which would be on those early outs only, or something like that. But it's a different fee scale as well.
Thank you, Val. I always had a question about, or I did last year, not always, when we have a snow day, and that's an issue for parents with, with taking care of their kids, so, Val?
Yeah, actually, I just had a meeting with all of the different groups that have before-after-school programming in our buildings, and one of the things that came up is they do want to stay the same, that it is easier for families. And if the district chooses to close school, then those programs are not gonna have school or daycare options either. That was a decision they made. And then on, if we decide to close early because of weather, the weather becomes, you know, worse as the day goes on, they will probably stay open, but close at an earlier time, like maybe 3:30, based on weather, and they'll make those announcements to families. So, they're informing their families now that they will not have any programming on the days that we do close the district.
I, I think that's problematic, but that's something I just, I think we need to always talk about. What do you do when we don't have a snow day and you find out at 6:00 AM that morning?
I guess my question is the Boys and Girls Club, why they don't offer programming all the way up to when classes start, when school starts? Is there a reason why?
I don't know the exact answer to that. I know some of it is training. I know there's a piece of that that they do. They also have, in the summer, I think, quite a bit of summer help from colleges, so those students are leaving, that kinda thing. I don't know the specifics, but I can certainly find out for you.
That would be, yeah, I would like that, please.
Keith, did you have another, did anyone else have other comments? Okay. So, we will go ahead through a voice, voice vote and approve the recommendation. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those same sign.
Nay.
Nay? Okay. We'll note that of record.
Maybe talk about this more, but it passed, so...
Okay. Next is Superintendent's reports.
Thank you. Well, certainly, I want to express my disappointment with the outcome of the PEPAL election. I believe those funds are desperately needed in our school district, and I look forward to providing this board an opportunity to discuss that issue due to calendar and scheduling issues. The first real opportunity for us to do that in the public forum will be October 14th, at our next board meeting. I think the board and the, and the public should look for that discussion and that opportunity. I'm pleased to congratulate Kennedy High School on receiving a resolution from the Iowa House of Representatives honoring the school's Best in the State status from U.S. News. The presentation was made by Iowa House Speaker Craig Paulson and Representative Art Stade. It was a very nice event and honors a great school for their success. Metro High School staff and students are preparing for their annual Day of Service this week. On Wednesday, staff and students will fan out to several locations in the community to assist with projects that, including Habitat for Humanity, the Oak Hill Jackson Neighborhood Resource Center, the Newbo Market, the Abbey Hill Farms, Cedar Rapids Public Library, Adopt a Highway Program, and Grantwood Elementary School. This is the 13th year that the Day of Service has been sponsored by Metro High School. It's a great opportunity for our students and those organizations. Last, I want to congratulate Jefferson High School National Honor Society on the success of their Community Leaders Panel last week. The National Honor Society officers invited four community leaders to discuss ways that they have incorporated the pillars of NHS, which are character, service, leadership, and scholarship into their professional and personal lives. The panelists were Nancy Kasparsik, a regional president of U.S. Bank, Les Gardner, President and CEO of Cedar Rapids Community Foundation, Chuck Peters, CEO of Source Media, a Gazette company, and Amanda Citron, co-founder of Seed Here Studio. Was a wonderful exchange, and meaningful information was shared. The district captured it on video, and the program will soon be airing on the district's cable access channels and posted on our website. Congratulations to all of the individuals at, at Jefferson. And speaking of Jefferson, we're joined tonight by two students from the high school, Nate Wager and Alexa McFaul, to give us a firsthand review of the new J-Hawk cafeteria. As you know, Jefferson Cafeteria was remodeled this summer as one of our major silo renovations. It's been open for a few weeks, and we thought that it would be great to have students tell us what's going on in that regard. Also, want to let the board know that we will be welcoming student groups at one board member, excuse me, one board meeting each month to share their perspective on a school activity happening, or talk about learning. So, we're excited with this new element. And Nate, Alexa, you get to kick it off, so tell us what's going on at Jefferson.
Well, we got new cafeteria this year. It's really great, like, it looks completely different, and it's really new, I guess. It's, like, it's a, like, great experience, I guess. It's something to be proud of, I guess, at the school. It's really, really nice.
There's a lot, there's been a lot of improvements with the new cafeteria. The space in general has definitely improved, but I, I know my personal opinion, the food has improved, and the way lunch is, like, it goes about has improved. It's a lot more neat and organized. Like, once you get into cafeteria, the lines, it's easier to find, easier to find the different options, and you, you have more options. I feel like it's easier to get to all the different, like, side meals, like the fruits and vegetables, and more, and more kids are taking those and taking advantage of that opportunity. So, it's helped out a lot. It's also helped a lot, like, for outside-of-school events. I know the, I went to one of the football pre-game dinners, and it was really nice. They had a nice place to set up the food, it was easy to get to it, and to, enough space for everybody to sit, and it truly is a really great addition to our school.
The cafeteria project was part of the silo dollars that include the HVAC system. That's new, and so, the air conditioning, a little better?
Yeah.
As well as, we've replaced a lot of the old single-pane window fixtures from a 1960's building with double-pane thermal windows, and that's been a, a real plus. So, we've got climate control, we tore out a wall between the hallway and the old cafeteria so that it blends into the hall, is that right?
Yeah.
Does that, that seem to work, people going and coming easier?
It's way easier to get in.
Yeah. And the, the system the students describe is called a scramble system, and it's where they go in and can quickly go to choice lines with a fruit and vegetable bar in the center to encourage healthy eating habits. So, are you eating more fruits and vegetables?
Oh, yeah.
Sure, I can.
Thank you very much, Nate and Alex, and do any other board members have comments? Keith?
I have a question, and I, and Dr. Benson briefly struck upon it, but what about the staging time, the amount of time it takes to get to the line versus having more time for actually eating?
Um, I think, like, like, when, when you're out in the hall trying to get in, there's a lot of people out there, but that goes, that moves quickly, and once you get into the lines, like, the separate lines, you can just go through and grab what you want, and then go between the different lines and get, like, the fruits and vegetables and stuff. Then you can, we got, like, six different registers, so there's usually only, like, three people in the line, you don't have to wait very long for that, so you have a lot of, a lot of time to eat.
I think they went to three. Did you used to have four?
Yeah.
I'm trying three, and I know that Principal McDonald will be interested in holding conversations with students to see how that changed worked with the new system. with students to see how that change worked with the new system. So we're looking at, at those time elements. We thought the scramble system would be helpful in that regard. It sounds like it's encouraging, but it's still early in the year, and I think the students need to give us feedback about that change.
Gary?
As one in the past that's had to use school cafeterias for public, public meetings and so on, I coached at Washington, we used the cafeteria over there. And after visiting when the opening of Jefferson, it is a real community asset, not just for the students, I hope that you appreciate it, but I know for the rest of the community, our community, that it has a great sound system and AV capacity to it and lighting that's easily controlled. So it's a, it's a good asset, not just for the students, but for the community also. And Washington is next up to have that.
Yes, those, right, those sister buildings are getting essentially the same treatment. Jefferson is a year ahead in terms of the cycle, and Steve Graham mentioned that we, in order to cycle resources in the silo fund and try to balance things out, we have this programmed major expenditures. And when Washington is finished, we will have completed the commitments made with the original silo vote, and this or a future board will have a challenge for what projects would rise to the surface and come up next. But that's really a discussion for another day. But Washington's a year behind. Next summer, their work will be done that would, was accomplished at Jefferson this last summer.
Okay. Thank you so much for joining us this evening and sharing your experiences. I also went over there, and it's just, it's just beautiful. It makes, makes me want to come over and have lunch with you, so. Thank you again for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, any other reports, Dave, from you? Any other board reports or comments? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to communications, delegations, and petitions. I do have several requests to address the board this evening. I'll start with Sue Pence. For all of you, just for the record, please state your name and address.
Thank you, I'm Sue Pence. I live at 4640 Lincoln Heights Drive Southeast, work at Bankers Trust Company. I'm accompanied by our executive director of the Cedar Rapids Community Schools Foundation, Karen Swanson, and we're here to give you a brief report of the success that we've had this last year. We've got seven days left in our fiscal year, so it's time to look back and do some celebrating with things that went well. Among them are our Kids in the Community Program. We were funded generously by Hills Bank again this year. We were able to benefit about 4,000 kids, K through 12, and about 60 field trips. We're looking forward to similar success this next year. We've got similar funding already in hand, we're pleased to say. We've seen a lot of growth in our program revenue. That means a lot of organizations, pass-through organizations, they help, they funnel their contributions through us so that their donors can get the tax benefits of working through a nonprofit and that we can help them with administration of the dollars that they get to deal with. So it's, it benefits all of us and helps our kids the most, obviously. It's programs that can be done probably more efficiently with our help than is done without it, so we're pleased to be able to help in that way. We've started another year of student enrichment grants. As you'll recall, those are $100 grants for curriculum help like art, books, reading rugs, lots of things in the classroom. Teachers need only apply for the grant, and it's basically at this point given out on a first-come, first-served basis. Last year, we ran out, I think, in about two months, and we, so it means that the program is meeting some needs, and we're enjoying being able to do that again with generous funding from the Jaco Leto Foundation, which Karen has been faithfully securing for us and begging for more every year because it's an increasingly popular program. Student scholarships, I was lucky to attend the senior recognition nights at both Washington and Kennedy this last year. We gave out a total of about $20,000 in scholarships that are funded by various individuals and over the course of many, many years, mostly to graduating seniors to pursue academic careers in post-high school kinds of educational settings. So we're pleased with what we can do, and one of the most, the newest programs we have is gathering alumni data, which we think will be able to help all of us in lots of ways that we have yet to be thinking through. But through Karen's tenacity and courage and leadership, we've been able to gather a lot of data, and we're looking forward to using that to assist in helping us connect with our alumni, helping alumni connect with each other, and getting all of us to have a boat that rises with the tide. We thank you for your support. We're awed by what you do. It seems like just a pittance, what we do in our foundation. We look forward to working with you, and if there was any way, we could write you a check for $300 million, so you didn't have to have another PEPAL vote, we would, but we'll help how we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Sue Clapp.
Sue Clapp, 2242 Evergreen Street Northeast, Cedar Rapids. President Meisterling, Dr. Benson, and others. I'd like to share information with you tonight about a very special award. Each year, the Iowa State Education Association awards one winning education professional and four runners-up with the Excellence in Education Award. Maybe you've seen the commercial featuring our teacher, Iowa Teacher of the Year, Tanya Johnson, explaining this program. I've seen it once. Awardees are honored for their outstanding contributions in making a difference in students' lives and the excellence they demonstrate in their profession every day. The 2013 Excellence in Education winner will receive a cash prize of $1,000, and runners-up will each receive a gift card courtesy of ISCA. All winners will receive their awards at a dinner banquet November 18th in Des Moines. In 2011, Elizabeth Altmaier was the recipient of this award. She is one of our teachers at Grant Wood Elementary. The Excellence in Education Award gave her many opportunities that would not have been possible had she not been nominated for this award in 2011. At the award ceremony, she was given the monetary award of $1,000, and Grant Wood was also given the same amount to spend as they saw fit. In February, she was awarded a trip to Washington DC to meet the other recipients of the award, and they studied about the country of Brazil and continued their learning of how to teach a global competency in their classrooms. Throughout this time, they had several webinars to help them get to know one another, and all this led to a 10-day trip, a learning experience in Brazil. Before they went, Rosetta Stone offered the group of educators the opportunity to learn Portuguese for free, and it was a valuable tool for their trip. While they were in Brazil, they were able to visit four different schools to see how the country is trying to improve their educational system, and they used the trip to network with each other and their new friends. They have each written, since written lesson plans on how they will be incorporating global competency into their classrooms. Liz stated, "The experience that I have taken away from this trip have been life-changing. I have had valuable opportunities and met many wonderful educators who have improved my teaching through this program." My hope is that more of our outstanding teachers will be nominated for this award this year, and I'd be happy to share the link with anyone interested in nominating their favorite teacher. Nominations are due by October 21st.
Thank you. Cassie Mibalski? Oh, okay, thank you. Larry Winclawski? Okay, thank you very much. Next, we're going to move to our consent agenda, and I asked the board.
Can I just, can we perhaps get that on our website or something?
Sure.
Oh, for the nomination.
For the favorite teacher.
Yes, we can.
Sure, we'll work on it.
I did forward it to the City PPA.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, anyone want to pull anything for separate consideration on consent? Or separate discussion? If not, this.
I have to abstain on the one item, on the sale of the property.
Okay. We'll note that in our record. This is a roll call action due to the personnel report.
Which item was that?
It is.
Is it BA 14-089?
Zero what? Zero what?
089.
That's not under the consent agenda.
That's separate.
Where is it? It's a separate item.
Okay, wait a minute.
Yes.
Yes.
To schedule the public hearing, it is a separate item.
14-089, sorry.
Right. That's not part of the consent agenda, so you'd be able to vote.
I just wanted to catch it.
Very good. Thank you, Alan. Are you ready for a roll call vote on that, then? Okay. Director Ann Halt?
Aye.
Director Witt?
Aye.
Director Westercamp?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
President Meisterling? Aye. Next, I'm going to turn this over to Dave to talk about the scheduling of public hearing for sale of district property.
By voice vote, we would like to schedule a public hearing for the disposition and sale of the Monroe Elementary School site. We have an offer. It requires a public hearing and then a vote, and we would like to schedule that for the October 14th board meeting.
Okay. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the resolution approving publication of public hearing notice and scheduling a public hearing on October 14th for purposes of sale of district property. Any comments or discussion at this time? Okay, Keith?
I would comment that the property had been listed, it's out in the open market. I think that we have done an adequate job of trying to sell the property.
Thank you for your comments. And Alan, are you abstaining from this voice vote?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Same sign. Okay. Next, Dave, did you want to introduce the next?
Yes, please. This is a little different. In researching the issue of the disposal of Lincoln Elementary School upon its return to the district pursuant to our contract with the community college that was entered into some 40 years ago, when, when they finished with it, there was a reversion clause, so we have the property back. It took some time to clear title and to clear up some issues on ownership. Those have all been resolved, and we have diligently sought a buyer for that facility. No buyer has come forth, so at this time, this is a resolution for disposition of that building, which would be demolished pursuant to a future board action. What you would do as a result of the public hearing would be to approve us to go forward, create a plan for demolition, and to advertise and bid for such action. Then that plan and that bid would have to come back to the Board of Education for approval. So you're not approving the demolition of the property, you're approving the administration to go forth and develop a plan and to seek the demolition of the property at a future time. And that public hearing needs to be scheduled also. We're taking the most conservative view of the legal requirements in doing this because we're basically saying that a demolition is a disposal, and disposals require the public hearing. So that's why we're taking this additional step rather than just bring you a plan and then bring you a bid. We want the public to have the opportunity to speak if they elect.
Okay, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the resolution approving publication of public hearing notice and scheduling a public hearing on October 14th, 2013, granting district administration the authority to proceed with demolition planning of district property. Any comments? Gary?
This is, again, this is just a resolution for the open hearing, so we'll have discussion when they come up on the 14th.
That's correct.
So, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of approving this recommendation, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Same sign. Thank you. Next, I'm going to turn this over to Val Dulzal to talk about early learning update. And you do have a pocket item.
Thank you, President Meisterling. It's my pleasure tonight to kind of share with you some updates about the Cedar Rapids Early Learning Program. I know that many of you are aware of this program that we've had with the four-year-old preschool, and I'm going to share about that as well as what it looks like this year. We started this model with the state funding that we received in the fall, actually, we received it right before the flood and started in the fall of 2008. And at that point, we were serving about 500 kids. That included three-year-olds, four-year-olds, and early childhood special education kids each of those years. And as we looked, we decided we needed to make some changes, and the neat piece of this is that this year, we are serving over 700 kids. We actually have 726, I think it was, when I looked on Friday. So we are serving a greater number of kids. So some conversation as to why there was a need to change that structure. As we discussed, our original model was a five-day-a-week model. It was four hours a day, and we were providing more programming than many of the other programs that offered four-year-old preschool in the state of Iowa. And we also were facing some budget cuts. Our funding level went from 8.6 per student to 8.5, so we had a decrease in funding, and we had to do something. We were able to maintain that for one additional year, but we did need to make some changes as we look to the future. We also had a waiting list, and that was probably our biggest concern. We had families that wanted programming, that were desiring programming, but were not able to get in for, because our, our programs were full for what we could serve. So we had to make some cuts and some changes. And with that, we did, we went from one section per day to two sections per day. So now we do a morning section, and we do an afternoon section. And so both of those programs look very much the same. They serve three-year-olds, they serve four-year-olds, and they serve early childhood special education programs. They meet, in our two-day section, they meet 8:45 to 11:45, and then again, 12:30 to 3:30. We've worked out busing and all the little bugs that would happen this fall because this was a new model for us. And it also allowed us to have more classrooms. We now have 19 classrooms, which means 38 sections of preschool that this district is offering, which is, is quite commendable. We also changed our class size. We had 20 students total that we could serve, and as we thought about the expectations that we were going to be needing by our staff of serving this many kids, having home visits with these, that many families, having conferences, that we needed to look at the number of students in each of those sections. So in the morning, they serve 16 kids, and in the afternoon, they serve 16 kids, and that is a change from that 20, obviously. We also had meals that took a lot of our time in that four hours to serve both breakfast and lunch, and so we no longer do serve those. We do provide a snack because it is just a short amount of time that they're with us, and we do provide that to every student that is in the program. This model, because it is just on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, allows us to have Wednesdays as professional development and not pull teachers from classrooms, like we had talked about earlier. We are using those Wednesdays for teachers in the morning to get professional development from our district staff, and then they're available in the afternoon to be part of some of those building things that are happening and be part of that building structure that's happening. We are also pulling in our paras. We've done a lot with our para training in the last several years, and we're at a point where we need to continue to provide a certain number of hours. We bring them in five times during the year on those Wednesdays, and we've adjusted their work week, that particular week, so that they can attend those trainings and get paid, and that's worked out very well. Where those programs are located are listed there, and those are in our district buildings. We obviously have them in 10 district buildings, and remember again, it's a morning and an afternoon session. We also have six community partners that we work with, and that's been a really great collaboration. That is a requirement of the state that we do collaborate with outside groups in providing our programming. They need to meet all of the requirements that we have to, and they are part of our professional development, they are part of the curriculum that we provide, the assessments that we're doing, and we're keeping data on those students that are not really even housed in our buildings but are part of our early learning program. And that's been great to be able to track those kids as they move forward into our schools and then into the various grades as they move, move on in age. We do have expectations, a lot of programs do, and this one does as well. We have Iowa Quality Preschool Program standards that we have to follow, and those things look at curriculum, for one thing. They look at relationships, they look at the teaching and what that looks like, they look at the teachers and what those certifications are. It looks at health, it looks at assessment. It looks at health, it looks at assessments, it looks at the physical environment, and it also looks at that leadership and management. So we have to try to meet those standards with every single program. And the state does come in when we go through accreditation and is making sure that we're meeting those Iowa Quality Preschool Program standards. And the state's been very happy with what they've seen in the past. The second piece that the state requires is a curriculum. They do give us a couple options. The one the Cedar Rapids District chose was creative curriculum. And this is a curriculum that, again, has all the four core areas, as well as it has a language piece, a physical piece, and a social, emotional, behavioral piece. So our students in those three hours are receiving a great deal of instruction, both in content areas and all of the other pieces that we know go along with learning. We also have some best practices that we've put in place for Cedar Rapids. Inclusion would be one of those, and I talked a little bit about that. We, our classrooms are made up of four-year-olds and three-year-olds, but we also try to include at least three early childhood special education students. They have IEPs. The way we can meet those needs is that our teachers are Unified License. That's a license for early childhood, meaning that they can teach both a general education student and a special education student at that early childhood level. And that has worked really well. So those teachers are writing IEPs as well as doing all of the teaching that they would do for a general education student. The other part that I should tell you about with special education is that we do have other special education programs in our buildings, just besides the early learning, that are preschool-oriented. We have two programs that are just for our severe disabilities students. We also have two programs that are for our autism students at the preschool level. And we have one program at Lynn County Child Development Center that's basically just focusing on behavior. So in that, we serve another 18 students. Those programs are full days, and so those kids go to school all day. But we do provide those professional development opportunities to that staff as well. So we are trying to meet those needs even within those programs. The additional thing that's, two things that are on there is Read It Again. That is a curriculum that we've worked real closely with, with Grantwood AIA, and actually have presented on that at some state conferences. And it is a program that really does focus on vocabulary. It focuses on narrative. When you think about narrative, it's retelling stories, phonological awareness, and just a general print knowledge, all those early reading skills that we want to make sure our kids have. That's a required piece as far as assessing for all of our special education, our speech students, as well as teachers can use it for any student that they want. And it has a very nice tracking system. You can kind of see some of the data here of last year of where we saw our students perform with the different curriculum that we offered in Read It Again. Great program, very literature-based. And then the last thing that we do in early learning is we also do PLCs. And at each building, they have a early learning PLC. And this year, one piece that we've added is that we have district staff coming to join those meetings. And so that there are people there kind of having conversations around the data and the information on their individual kids, as well as providing a district perspective of things that might be resources, supports that maybe could be discussed and talked about. So that is our Cedar Rapids Early Learning Program. Are there any questions?
Could you share who are your community partners?
Yes. Right now, we have six community partners. We have Lynn County Child Development Center. We have St. Matt Preschool. We have Trinity Lane, Lovely Lane, Kinder Care, and Five Seasons Daycare is also a community partner. Thank you.
Alan?
Got three quick ones. There are 10 district buildings, but there's another 10. What happens in those other 10 elementary schools? Is there a plan going forward to add, to grow that? Or is it just the kids come to these 10 and it's based on geography?
Right. And it is not really based on geography because any student can go to any of those preschool programs that are in our buildings, or actually in any of our community partners as well. And they do not have to go through the permit process.
Okay.
So any student can attend.
That helps.
In fact, even a student outside our district can attend one of our programs.
Pre-choose, good. The other one is ELS and BDs, behavior disorders. How do you deal with those? Or maybe you don't have those issues?
We do. We do. We certainly, like I said, we have the one behavior-focused classroom at Lynn County Child Development Center. But the beauty of our program with the unified teacher is that those teachers in our classrooms in Cedar Rapids have been through, part of their instruction to get their license was to get special education instruction. Special education involved, obviously, learning, but also behavior. So they've had some work with that. As part of the professional development, we've done a lot with classroom management, behavior strategies. In the last few years, we've offered quite a bit of training in that area. And then as far as the ELL population, that is a growing population for us. We work really nicely with the ELL facilitators in our, facilitating our district, as well as those teachers that are in those buildings. They've been very supportive of questions, how to work with us. And we do use interpreters when needed because that is certainly a need that we have.
Well, the Spanish, I know we're running it through right now. What grade are we at in Spanish? Third?
Third grade.
Third grade. And I don't know if these kids get immersed in any of that or not. I mean, it'd be kind of funny to see that in these preschoolers.
You know what I have noticed, and Kim is here. One of the things I think we see in some of our classrooms is that students who, in an environment where there's other students that are speaking Spanish, those teachers are just putting those words up, they're putting those pictures up, they're introducing that culture piece. We've not done it as a curriculum piece. It's happening in those buildings where we see those greater number of kids that are certainly of that.
Great job. I love it. Thank you.
Gary?
Before we move to the two sections, you said we had a waiting list. Is the waiting list, do we still have a waiting list?
We, you know what? We have a waiting list of, I'm not sure how many, very few. And it's because they want a morning session. Right now, we have openings in our afternoon. And we kind of thought that might happen this first year, that that's a possibility of certainly something that could happen as you transition because parents wanted to start something in the morning. I think similar to our AK model, we tend to see that change over time, and we have seen families being very happy with afternoon as well.
So we're not quite at a capacity? I mean, we still have some room?
We are not. That is right. We still have about 70 spots we could fill across the district.
Well, I know you said at the onset that one of the reasons was because of funding and shortening of funds. It seems to be such a valuable program, and I know our K-12 teachers appreciate the readiness that they come in from the program. So if in fact, we could have more students, if it's a matter of funding, then I think it's something we need to advocate for. The last question, do we provide any transportation?
We do for our special education students only. Again, we, it's amazing how our staff, as well as our families, have really started to network on what are some resources for after-school care if I need that, or before school care now if I need that. And they work together. I've seen families carpool together, you know, to try to get the kids picked up or dropped off or things like that. So right now, we're not transporting any of our general education students.
They're working as a community to-
They are.
Make sure, that's good.
They are.
Any other questions or comments from the board? You know, it's nap time in the afternoon.
Yes. But you would be amazed how many morning kids, or afternoon kids, need to sleep in a little bit in the morning. So it works.
Thank you very much. That was an excellent report, and we appreciate the work in early learning. Next, I'm going to turn this over to Mary Ellen Moss to talk about transforming the school counseling program.
Thank you, President.
Thank you, President Meisterling. Superintendent Benson, members of the board. As you know, our district has been engaged in a comprehensive school transformation process over the past two years with the Education Trust and the National Center for Transforming School Counseling. And some of the work that is being done within that transformation process is directly aligned with our school improvement planning, directly aligned with our efforts to close the achievement gap, and directly aligned with our college and career readiness planning as well. So this evening, I'm actually going to turn it over to Stephanie Shutt, who is our PK through eight learning supports liaison. And she's going to provide information about this very important work that's being done both last year and as recently as Friday. We had our teams in to work on this process as well. Stephanie?
Thank you, Mary Ellen, and thank you very much for giving the opportunity to speak tonight. This is something that I'm really excited about. Previously to this position, I was the counselor at Cleveland Elementary. So I've had an opportunity to see this last year as a counselor eyes, and now in my new role as a facilitator. First, the first slide I want to talk a little bit about is the National Center for Transforming School Counseling. Mary Ellen talked a little bit about that. But this is a three-year commitment that our district has signed up for. And it really helps the participants, the counselors, grasp that critical role that school counselors have in education reform, so they can contribute effectively to the mission of the schools, and that is to educate students at very high levels. This aligns perfectly with the ASCA, the American School Counselors Association model. This model has been in place probably since early 2000. And Cedar Rapids, about 2008, when I got here, had started with having a little bit of talks about how to get this kind of put together with these different parts. And so this is a great alignment, having this transforming school counseling come at this time. The nuts and bolts, as you can see, is a pretty big commitment on the counselor's part. As you notice, that we are in the second year, and we have five full days. And as Mary Ellen mentioned, last Friday was our first kickoff where all the school counselors of Cedar Rapids gathered together and worked in a professional learning community. In between that time, it has a great model, has that able to carry through because these technical assistant days occur in between those dates. So on that, you see the blue are those technical assistant times where staff from the Transforming School Counseling Group come to help counselors right on the spot. So we're not in a room, we're right where the action is in buildings. And you can see that those eight to 10 days. We also had the luxury of having that commitment from building principals come. And the building principals come the very first day, like they did last Friday, and then in May at the end, to see how the plans have come. And I think I'll talk a little bit more about that. Our first year was really spent taking a look at that ASCA, or that American School Counseling model. Each building developing a vision and a mission that aligns with their own building. And then it also, we also spent a great deal of time of learning about data, what data is important, how to get the data, and how to access the data. And then really looking at our own buildings and talking to each other about what our data looks like. Toward the end of the spring then, last year, was the big job of taking all that data and developing goal areas to begin implementation this fall. So two goal areas for each building have been established. I probably should put that in a different order, but I'm going to go to number two, and I'll talk about those goals. This year now, as we implement those action plans, Friday, we had an opportunity to do revisions, if we thought. Some of our buildings changed staff. So counselors that were not there last year inherited the plan that was written by the previous counselor. So we worked, working out those kind of bugs last Friday. This year also, the professional learning part that the Transforming School Counseling people will bring to us is a systemic change. So as counselors start to get involved with the work, and they're working through their plans, and they're watching their data, they may see a place where a systemic change needs to happen, that why have we always offered this course? And why aren't these students taking this course? So it's that kind of age of excitement of seeing how this all will come out and align. I want to share with you an example of what goals look like. I didn't put the exact numbers, but all of these are SMART goals. So for example, they do align exactly with our school goals. The elementary decreased the number of office referrals in the area of physical aggression for all fourth and fifth graders, comparing to what their data was on their date last year as their baseline and how they're going to change that. You can see another elementary goal has a more academic focus. They would like to increase the IO assessment reading proficiency scores of the third and fourth graders who have free and reduced in one academic year. Okay? So you get an idea that these goals are very real. They have specific percentages and numbers. And the goals are academic or career or personally, personal, social related. This is an example of what, oops, there we go. This is an example of what the action plan looks like. For years, I've been a counselor for about 11 years, and it seemed like, you know, we never really knew if what we did impacted students. If there was some kids who were fighting, we'd do a small group on a friendship group, and we hope, well, maybe they'll be better and they'll understand that. And now we have a plan in place that can really help and guide us to know what the perceptual data is. Does the student feel like they get along or have friends? They also have results. How many officer referrals are we looking at? And we can make that decision to see if those strategies. And by the way, those strategies were developed with the principal and other staff members and students as part of that brainstorming at the last spring. They also align up at the very top with the ASCA model. So all of those are standards that counselors are responsible for, and so they align with the building's needs, and it all kind of meshes together. There's a wide variety of strategies that counselors have chosen. Some, they are, the counselors actually deliver the service, or another members of the staff would be a part of that. But the counselor is in charge of collecting that data for that particular strategy. What we hope to happen is that this will have improved best practice, and that it does align with our common core standards and the ASCA framework. One benefit, too, that was not part of the national counseling, transforming counselors, is that strength and relationship between the principal and the counselor. Also, it's an empowerment for counselors to be viewed as building leaders. And counselors are very well-equipped to address the needs. They're in a very unique position to have access to data and then to act upon it. And finally, the last is that increased access and equity that all students would be able to gain. I think that's it. Yes. Any questions?
From the board.
Karen just moved down closer to you.
Can we, at some point, can we see the, what the objectives are for each school, what their, what their goals are, the action plans? I'd be interested in seeing the directions that the counselors, you know, our buildings feel that they need to go into. And the second, just aside, and I hope as I look through that, I would see some attention to bullying and harassment. There would be areas that I would hope that someplace we're addressing.
Any other questions or comments? Keith?
You said they were SMART goals, but as I looked at them, they-
These weren't, no.
This didn't have, we will increase by five percent.
No, no. The actual goals do. I just took an example, just so you could get a flavor of what kinds of goals. But they are, they are to the number, by such and such percent as compared or as measured by the number of officer referrals last year, or the number of students who took this course. So they are, the ones I had up there were not SMART goals.
Other questions or comments?
Another question is, what coordination is taking place between the counselor and the principal in the buildings to achieve these goals? I've heard of conflicts there in the past. Are we getting those worked out?
It is a work in progress, but a good first step was these, the first two weeks as school improvement planning were going on with all the buildings, counselors brought their plans with them, to that, sitting around that table to make those plans. The building goals are not, this isn't separate. This is all together working toward the same thing. So our belief is that it would increase that, and as counselors start to see the results of their work, there'd be mutual trust and strengthening of that relationship.
Yeah, excellent report. Great program, and we look forward to hearing from you next year to see how this year went. So thank you for sharing this information with us.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our meeting tonight. Please take home your school board calendars and fill out your meeting evaluations, and have a great evening. Thank you.